Good evening, everyone. I am Mike O'Reilly, Chairman of the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. It is December the first, 2022. It is 7:00 PM, and this is the regular meeting. About to proceed. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the mother for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Oh, ringing. All right, we're going to call the roll next, starting on my right. I'm Nick Benetia, alternate.
Brian Thonden, Commissioner.
Leanna Brozzi, Commissioner.
Bruno Mayini, Vice Chairman.
Robert Westlin, Commissioner.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Sarah Stroud, Recording Secretary.
Okay, so we have a regular Commissioner's seat. We don't need to seat alternates. We'll start with general public participation. So this is a time when members of the public can speak to the Commission about items not on the agenda. That is, general items concerning the town or planning and zoning commission. So if anybody is online, please raise your hand, or anybody in the audience that would like to speak about items not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak about items not on the agenda?
Sweet.
Doesn't look like it. And we're going to continue on the agenda with our first public hearing. This is EFP 2022-03, file number 110. It's 125 Garder Road. Ryan, you have the announcements?
Yes. Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice a public hearing to be held December 1st, 2022. In accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, December 1st, 2022, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting with in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall. EFP 2022-03, file number 110125 Garder Road, I-2 excavation fill-in permit application for proposed artwork activity to prepare site for further property development at 125 Garder Road. Assessment map 094 lot 002, 125 Garder Road, LLC, Home and really Engineering LLC, African. Notice was published twice and had to get opposed. Oh, sorry, it was once and opposed Friday, November 18th.
This is... That's it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Question or comment?
And, Rick, you have...
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Exhibits.
Exhibit number one, the application. Exhibit number two, Health Department commex dated 11/18. And exhibit number three, return of certified.
Yeah, that's...
That is all.
Okay. So we'll start with the applicant.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. For the record, my name is Robert Pryor, professional engineer at Lance and Leo, solely engineering. Here tonight representing our applicant, Russell Construction, for the application at 125 Garder Road. We're here tonight, really, we're with Chris, my colleague from solely engineering, who do most of the presentation of the site plan. But I'd like to go over kind of what we're hoping to accomplish tonight. We'd like to present the project to you. You know, we understand the Commission members, members of the public may have concerns. We'd like to hear those concerns, understanding that, you know, we're here, we understand what the situation is. Our applicant, you know, this property was, had gotten site plan approval way back in early 2000s, I believe. Some work was done on that site by a previous owner as far as excavation and blasting and quarrying of that site. Site was subsequently sold to our applicant. He did, he continued to do work there, didn't get the proper permits. We're, there's no discuss, there's no, you know, we're not disputing the fact that he didn't work without permits. We're looking to get, we're here to move the project, the property forward, see what we need to do to get him on the right track as far as getting the permits. So we'd like to hear your comments after our presentation, comments from the public, and then likely, most likely, continue the hearing so that we can thoughtfully address the comments and concerns that you have. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Blowski from our office to go over the site plans that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. For the record, my name is Chris Blowski, and civil engineer with solely engineering. Office is located here in Monroe, 501 Main Street. We're here before you tonight. Rob gave a good summary for excavation and fill permit application from 125 Garder Road. As he alluded to, the site was previously, the approval secured in 2004. Some work was done on the site over a number of years, went through litigation, and then the previous property owner sold it to our client. So we're here to prepare the site for future development. We are seeking an excavation and fill permit. We are also in for wetlands currently. We have not closed yet on that application. So as Rob alluded to, we would like to present the plans, seek your comments, and then continue to the next meeting. So first, where is the site? So this is a Town of Monroe map here. Route 25 runs north-south. Would you mind sharing my screen? Thank you. There we go. Thanks, Rob. So this is the Town of Monroe here. Route 25 runs north-south. If you go along Route 25 to the north, and then onto Pepper Street, and then onto Garder Road, our site is located at 125 Garder, it's on the left, proceeding towards a river, if you will. So zooming in again here, this is Garder Road, running along this direction here. This is Route 25 over here, Town and Newtown, Town and Monroe border. And then you can see our site, and you can see from the aerial the extent of the work that was previously done. Next screen here, so we've been on that. So currently, this is the limit of disturbance from the previous property owner. There has not been any further disturbance in any direction this way. The blue line that you see on the screen is the limit of existing wetlands. So there is a pretty substantial buffer that has remained in place throughout the previous property owner. And the site is currently accessed in the front right here, area of existing gravel drive that leads you into the site. And again, this entire area you see here has been disturbed. This aerial is a few years old, but I would say that this is an accurate depiction of the current standing of the property.
Work has gone beyond the boundary, north and south. Does that accurately match?
This is just traced in from the earth, so yeah, not policies. It's, it's a little bit to the north in terms of where the property line actually is. Yeah, it's just traced in, sorry.
That's not the property lines?
This is the property line, but it's not right on top of where it should be. It should be to the north. You'll see in the survey where the grade cuts are. So this is the plan that we currently have before you. So the property on the site generally in this corner is the lowest. It's about 408, 410. It climbs up in this corner to about 430, 435. And then it goes up and down and fluctuates until you get across the side over here. Then there's currently a 30 to 40-foot hill or slope that goes up to an elevation of about 468, 470 here. And then again, it does come back down towards the road. So in this corner, you're at about 440, and down here, you're at about 408, 410. So there's about 30 feet of elevation change along the property frontage. And then the area in here is anywhere between 425 and 440. And then it goes down the hill into the back where the wetlands are in the rear. And you see the wetlands laid by the slide right here. So our plan is to come in here and essentially prepare a level pad for future development. I do have a potential development plan that we submitted before you, and I will show at the end of our presentation. In order to do that, we're going to have to come in here. And we're going to maintain the existing drive right through here. This is kind of the middle point between the elevations. So we're going to come in at about 425. That's right in this spot right here. And we're going to cut down the grades across the entire site. So you're looking at 424 contour that runs here, and then you have a 422 contour here. And then we have our water quality basin, contamination basin in the rear of the site. And we will treat that stormwater quality before outletting to level spreader and discharging the wetlands. Along both sides of the stormwater quality basin, there's going to be a series of burns and divergent swales. All the water will essentially flow down this way, if you will, towards the wetlands in the rear of the site. It'll be collected by the swales and burned, routed to the stormwater quality basin, and then allocated to the rear. We are seeking an excavation fill permit here, so there are no buildings proposed at this time. We do show a truck scale and a construction trailer here. The purpose of that is, I would like to make this clear, our applicant is not looking to open like a material selling yard, if you will, here. He's going to be using the material himself. So there's not going to be like open sales to other people, if you will, if that kind of makes sense.
So he's got to weigh the material to use it?
He just needs to know how much is coming off the site in the trucks. So he has a job.
Measure that by how much, you know, a 30 yards goes on his triaxle?
Correct, they can, but to get an accurate measure of going off the site. And we've discussed, I haven't submitted updated plans yet, but there are ways where the loaders can also do that. So we're exploring and in discussion with our client, potentially eliminating this truck scale. But I just wanted to make that point clear that, you know, he's going to be, our client is going to be using the material.
Off-site?
Correct, yeah. Different, he's a site contractor, so they're going to be using it for various projects. There is, on these plans before you, there is a truck.
Let me, let me just ask you a quick question.
Go ahead.
So you want to put a scale, once you have a scale there, you want to excavate that property, and you want to crush that rock?
Yep.
And remove that rock on that property?
Correct.
And then you want to bring in fill on top of that?
No, we're, we're not going to be bringing in fill here. There may be like one or two low spots that will require a few trucks, but this is strictly an export operation.
How much you plan on exporting out of there?
A little over 100,000 cubic yards lives on the plants before. And again, if you saw the site today in its current extent, the topography is very unforgiving. It goes up and down.
I'm well aware of that site. I'm well aware of that.
Yeah, there's, I'm just explaining to the rest of the Commissioners, it needs, there's significant work that has to be done to bring it up to standards to develop in the future. So again, we have the truck scale and the temporary construction trailer. This dark banding that you see here would be a rock face.
I have a question. I don't mean to interrupt.
Oh, no worries.
But I am. Explain to me the whole truck scale thing. So...
If you're not selling anything. Correct.
But you're taking it off, you're using the scale for what purpose? Just enlighten me.
Okay.
I don't know.
No, again, it's, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty simple. So he's doing a project for somebody, right? He has a customer, and he's, and he's bringing material to that project as part of the project. The customer's paying for a certain, for certain yardage or certain tons, right? Joe has to know how many tons he's bringing. There's only one way to do that, you have to weigh the truck. That, that's, that's, it's as simple, it's as simple as that. But that's why the scale has to be there. You could, I don't know, I don't know how else you'd do it. Unless he brings, unless he brings this to his, to his, he brings the truck from here to his scale over on Pepper Street and weighs it there, but it just doesn't make any sense unless he's going that way.
Material is typically sold by the yard and not, not, not by the pound?
No, aggregates are sold always by the ton, always by the ton. There's, there's no way to sell aggregate and that kind of material by the yard. You can't, you can't, you can't do it, it's always by the ton. You go to any quarrying operation, you go to ONG, or anything like that, they sell it by the ton.
We, we're trying to stay away from the quarry, in a kind of way.
No, I, I understand, I understand, I understand the concern, so. I understand that concern.
Trying to stay away from that.
Oh.
So this, now, the other question I have to ask you is how much material has been removed off this property since he took possession of it?
We can only talk, we only have survey information when we got the job, so we can't.
So can you go back, back in, back on Google Maps and find how, what, how much this material has come before?
We certainly can do that analysis for you.
Yeah, I asked that the last time when you came in here, that I would like to assesses that what's been taken off there so far without a permit? And then what it was when he purchased the property before we move on with this? Because I want to know how much material has already moved, because there's a lot of activity over there.
No, I understand.
And so...
That's not a problem for, say, a next meeting?
So, no, no, we're happy. I mean, it'll, it'll be of the accuracy that we can get from a Google Maps or a record. Connecticut Eco, you know, the LiDAR survey from, you know, there's, there's other places of information. It's only going to be so accurate, but we're happy to look at that for you.
You had an issue with that property a long time ago, too.
Yeah, I know.
And so what I'm saying to you is that I know that there's been a lot of activity there, and there's been a lot of complaints of the activity there.
So a little on that activity, I believe most of it was in pursuit of the Pepper Tree Reconstruction Project. You asked how much material was specifically removed. We don't have surveys from before our client bought it, so that would be a tough number to calculate. But there hasn't been much activity in the name of excavation. There hasn't been any blasting going on there. They've been hauling in material, hauling out material, because they've been, they're the city, I was worried, them, Pepper Tree Reconstruction Project. So they've...
No, I, I have that.
Correct.
Have a permit to haul material in there in the first place.
No, I understand, I'm just saying that...
Or, or to process material on that property.
But I'm just, yeah, I'm stating that it's more been material in and out, it hasn't been...
Well, no, I know about the project, and everybody brings that up, that because of the project, but they didn't have any permit to bring material onto that property.
I understand, I can't say for the details of that agreement, but I'm just stating what I know. And I also know that the amount of activity on the site has significantly decreased. I mean, if you go out there today, we know, we have spoken with our client, and there is not activity going on at the moment.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. This is Joe Grass. Would you mind if I step in and answer some questions? How are you?
Just state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. This is Joe Grass, though, with 125 Garder Road LLC. I, I, I noticed there's, I see there's some questions regarding the material that's coming in and out of the, out of 125 Garder Road. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that you may have.
Do you know how much material was removed from the site since you purchased it?
5,000 yards.
5,000. Thank you very much. That was one question. Do you have a specific announcement? What activity have you been doing on that property?
We, we've been, we've been given the right by your, your previous engineer, Scott Schatzlein, to use that property and the 45 Pepper Street property as staging areas, okay, for, for the purpose of the Pepper Street Reconstruction Project, okay? We've used material from the site to make the road base for the road, okay? And also, also temporarily stored excavation, which is no longer there, okay, for the purposes, for the benefit of the Pepper Street Reconstruction Project.
But the town gave you permission to do that?
Yes.
No.
Yes, yes, they did. Yes, they did.
The appropriate party did not give the permission. Appropriate party was this party?
Which is this board?
Right. His board didn't.
That was, that was, that was an approval in, in the, part of the project the town had to provide, a staging area for the contractor to do its work, okay? In lieu of, in lieu of disturbing town property, the town and, and us, the contractor, agreed that we could use our, our property, okay, for the purpose of the Pepper Street Reconstruction Project. And that's what we've done.
But the town doesn't really have that right to do that. It's got to come in front of our board.
Well, that's absolutely, that's absolutely, well, that's absolutely what happened.
Okay.
Okay, Rick, can you look into that? Because, I mean, that's possible. And then see if that was the case.
The problem is when you hear one says "the town," technically, we are also the town, so it's "who?" Specifically, and it says...
It's the appropriate party. It's the appropriate party, it's the county and zoning commission.
This was an agreement when, when we were procuring, we were procuring the project, and during our pre-construction meetings with BL and Scott, Scott Schatzlein, this was, this was an agreement.
So I'm assuming Scott probably gave that to you in writing, correct?
Yes, correct. I'm writing, I don't know if we have it in writing, but we, it was an agreement.
Need to look into that. Yeah, Rick can check on that. All right. Thank you.
And FYI, there is a cease and desist order because of that.
Right, and, and they did, and they did, and they did say we have to initiate a cease and desist because it's a violation, but we're not going to act upon it. Because, in benefit of the Pepper Street Reconstruction Project.
The cease and desist resulted in the submission of this application.
That's not true. That's not true. We...
Joe, you're currently, Joe, you're currently before the Commission.
We've been going, we've been going through the pro, the, we've been going through the process of trying to get this approved of design for the last two years, since we acquired the property. And now we're at the stage of, you know, it took a year to have it designed, and now we're here in front of the Commission to get it approved.
So it took a year and a half to figure out that you had to take 30, 30 feet off one side to bring it to another?
Yeah, there was a lot, yeah, absolutely, there was a lot of design. Several hundred thousand dollars in design to have this, to have this worked up.
We can move on. If you have any other questions? Not right now. Okay.
People like Chris, get to his presentation.
Finish, and then we'll hold on questions, all right, everybody? Chris finished. Chris, go ahead.
So again, we'll be entering the site over here, in the middle of Garder Road. This will be an 8 to 10-foot rock face, so a smaller rock face. And on this side here, in the dark band, you're looking at a 30 to 40-foot rock face, depending on the area. It's highest over here. And again, we're all, we're trying to lower this so we can get an elevation path here. We chose the elevation that we're at because of this, in the elevation that goes along Garder Road. So as I mentioned before, it's really low, low over here, and very high over here. There's a 30-foot grade change. You're kind of trying to pick in the middle, if you will, to balance out the site. And we do have wetlands in the back here. We are substantially above them with the bottom of our elevations here. So we wanted to stay above the water table and anything, you know, along that nature. And we are proceeding beyond this area, this line here. We are saving areas also in here, here, and in the rear here for septic for the future industrial development that will take place on this site. So as I alluded to before, it's a little over 100,000 cubic yards. I believe it's 109,000, 100,000 to have to be exported from the site. There's a small amount of fill, a few thousand yards at best. There have to be places, some of the areas are a little bit lower. The topography on the site, it goes up and down, and it's nowhere near a level pad that can be used for development at the moment. So this is what facilitated the excavation and fill permit up for you guys. So here's our soil erosion sediment control plan. We have our anti-tracking pack construction entrance. This line that you see here is the limit of disturbance. You will notice that we tried to pinch in the limit of disturbance, so we did not need, we tried to limit the amount of waivers that we would be requesting from you guys. Because if you go with 425, you have a property line. You go within 50 feet of the street line, there's a whole bunch of codes that will require waivers. So if you notice here, our limit disturbance is pinched towards the inside of the site. Avoid the need for the waivers. The only waiver that we are requesting is of one section, and it is, you are allowed to truck in the industrial zone, but it has to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that is on the plans, but we are requesting permission to crush on this site. So we will be blasting the rock out of here, really placing it in a crusher, and then we will be hauling it off the site. That is the only waiver. Again, that section is listed on the plans for you that we are requesting as part of this application. We purposely designed this to die, so we can't see any other additional things. Again, construction entrance, limit of disturbance. You see the silt fence, we put hay bale back in all the back here. We have additional sediment traps and divergence wells. Basically, all the water will be flowing down this way. We will capture it, collect it, and treat it before it's outletted to the wetlands. We also have temporary stockpile of material here for topsoil. There is not too much on the site that has already been scraped off, but the material that is there, we will stockpile in this corner as shown here. So that was phase one, and this is phase two. Now you see the, the rock face in place here. And again, still within that limit of disturbance, same soil erosion sediment control measures as phase one. This is our reclamation plan, so these are pre-existing vegetation. So this giant box you see right here is currently pretty much the active limit of disturbance or what has been previously disturbed in the site. There's also significant wooded vegetation along the wetlands corridor here. I'd say there's approximately 50 to 75 feet. It hasn't been touched, and it widens out to 100, 110 feet in this general area. There's also some existing vegetation along the street and in this area. And you'll see on the next screen here that we're proposing to maintain that. We're actually increasing that landscape buffer. As there is a 50-foot landscape buffer required by regulations, we'll be abiding by that. So this entire front area, we will be re-establishing and landscaping. And then in the back here, where we are disturbing a little bit to stall some burns and divergent swales, as well as the outlet for our water quality basin, we will be receiving and establishing in these general areas. But this hatch that you see here, this stripe that goes around, that will not be disturbed. That's going to maintain its wooded condition. Again, that's towards the rear of the site where the wetlands are. We also submitted some cross-sections of the site. I'm happy to walk through them if anyone has any questions. But essentially, you will notice that, again, in the northern portion of the site here, the grade is higher. It's 465 to 470 elevation. We are dropping it down with the rock face to about 424, 426. In this corner, it'll drop down to, the current elevation is about 445, 450. Same thing, we're dropping it down to 424, 426. So you're looking at about a 40-foot rock face here, about 25 to 30-foot rock face here. And the rock face decreases in size up until about this point. So we will only, again, need a rock face along this corner, and then a smaller six to eight-foot rock face along this portion of the site. And again, this, this rock face is necessary, as we didn't want to grade right up to the property line. We wanted to keep as much of that existing buffer in place as we can. So that's the, the plan here. You'll see this, this basin is approximately five to six feet deep. So all the sheet, all the water will sheet flow and be collected by that basin and treated before exiting into the existing wetlands outside. And again, just to reiterate, the, the grade climbs on this corner of the site as you go up Garder by about 30 feet. So this portion is 30 feet higher than it is here. And the topography on the site is, is all over the place. It goes up and down, and there's not really any good flat areas currently. So these are our cross-sections. If there are any specific questions, I'd be happy to go back.
Can you zoom up, zoom in, or is that possible to...
I'm in a...
AA section?
Section AA?
Yeah, the top one there. Okay, so you're going to create a 45-foot rock face there, right?
That is correct. At the top of the cliff, there'll be 46 foot high, that's your fence. That's the existing topography on the, on the site. It's high in this area, and then it climbs down. You can see the existing grade right here. There currently exists a pretty significant slope on the site, and we're just extending it.
Why wouldn't you just extend the slope up? Don't make it a rock face of 45 feet?
So in order to that, we wouldn't be able to put a building in this area, because this area is currently occupied. So if we went from this portion right here, using my cursor, on a gradual slope, then we wouldn't be able to put a building, because we'd have to make up that 40-foot grade difference. That's why we're...
You, you have plans of the building you plan on putting on there?
I'm sorry?
You have plans of the building you plan on...
Yeah, I have, oh, I don't have architecturals, but I have a development plan that we've laid out for the site that shows two industrial buildings. I'll show you guys in just a minute. I just, is there any other question?
Are you going to prevent, and how are you going to prevent that rock face from, when it starts to deteriorate and rocks coming off of it? What are you going to put in?
So the rock face will be stabilized. A geotechnical engineer will have to look at it, and the building will be set. There would be catchment area... And the building will be set. There would be catchment area at the bottom of the rock face. And there'll be a clear zone, as we call it. So the building will be set back far enough from that for then if any rocks fall or anything like that. The building won't be right up against the rock face per se.
Can we look at the KK section? Looks like this, how, this is a fifty foot face now we're looking at?
So its highest point right now, you're looking at about forty-five, forty to forty-five feet right there.
So you're going to remove a hundred thousand yards of material to put two buildings in the middle of nowhere?
They're, those real buildings, I wouldn't say they're in the middle of the nowhere. There is a significant industrial area here. The property is open for industrial. So that is our intent at this time.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
So. Let's go to the commissioners for questions.
Just one second, I'd like to.
You're not done, sorry.
No, don't worry. So this is, you're asking about our feature plan for the site. You had this before this PDP. This is our potential development plan. After we bring the site down to the proper grades, this is what that development will look like in the future. So you see one building here, the series of loading docks, and another building here with the entrance off of.
That section of Garter Road is gravel?
It's currently un paved.
That section, what can you?
Are you done?
Can't be paved, right?
I don't, I don't think, yeah.
I think it's scenic.
It's ever going to get paved.
No, is it scenic? Is it scenic? That, that part of Garter is scenic too. So you're never going to be able to pay.
Correct.
Chicago?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are done. So you want to help the commissioners. I appreciate that.
All right, let's start on my right. Dominic?
As far as timeline. As far as timeline, how long do you propose to be on the site?
Currently seeking a permit for five years. I don't think it'll take that long. But we are seeking a permit according to the regulation for five years.
And how much blasting are you entertaining?
We're going to have to blast everywhere that there's rock on site. The site has currently been mined, as I alluded to earlier. So there's pretty much majority of the site will require blasting.
Have you done borings already where you know you're going to blast?
We have not done borings. The most of the site is exposed rock at this time. And within the limit of disturbance, as you say, is rock at this time.
And at what point would you know what kind of a building is going to put there?
Within a year or two, several years. It depends on market, discussions our clients having with potential suitors. There's a lot of factors at play. But this is the concept that we put together to show you guys what that would look like in the future. So, and then that would have to come before you, that plan.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I think there's going to be a lot of questions with, or just thoughts. I mean, we're approving a scale on the property, blasting on the property, rock crushing on the property. The property that has already been mined. How is this not a quarry?
It's not a quarry because we're actually seeking to prepare the site for this development. I don't have a, I can show you the survey, but the site right now in its current state is, the topography is unforgiving, to say the least. This is excavation fill permit is to set the stage for the future development. We're not intending to sell the material on the open market. As I alluded to before, I think that's a very key decision to make. If you were to be operating a quarry here per se, which we are not intending to do. Then you would want to sell the material on the open market. Because if you were just blasting and you couldn't sell it to anybody, then there wouldn't really be a point of running a quarry. Our intention, as I described earlier, is to develop this property in the near future.
The material is still getting sold to somebody. It's just within the plan of that person paying for some sort of construction on their property. And then it's getting weighed and they're paying for it. It's just a middleman, basically.
I mean, I think, I think we don't have to agree though. Develop the property, you'd have to do some of this work.
Absolutely.
Right, we're not, we would do this, we would, we would be before you with this plan regardless of whether it's the current applicant or some other applicant. So that's what we, we can talk about, you know, the, the, the issue I hear, I guess, I guess the point is that. At least with this applicant, he has a place to use the material. He doesn't have to sell the material. He can use the material on projects that he's doing. So, well, I understand that. He's still selling the material. Somebody's going to get billed for it. No matter what it is, he's selling the material.
Yeah, because it's not, you wouldn't need a scale.
No matter which way you look at it, he's still selling the material.
Yeah, no, I.
He's selling it on the open market or he's bringing it to a job site that he's doing. He's still selling the material. And that's besides. The problem I have is that these are conceptual buildings again. You done?
No.
Go ahead, finish up.
No, I mean, you know, so I think.
Well, I'm just saying about the material. That's why I wanted to clarify that.
Well, I, I, you know, I think a big focus going forward, because you're right. I mean, obviously, if, if we want this site developed, work needs to be done on that. I think we're absolutely all in agreement there. It's just coming up with, you know, some form of assurance that once it gets to the level we want it at, it's going to stay at that level and not continue. And, you know, we might have to get creative there. Who knows? Whether it's with Bond or what, you know, we'll figure that out. But I just want to make sure that's all out there and, and we're already starting to think about that.
And I think we're, you know, I think we're in agreement. I think, I think any, any, any form of either reporting or, you know, anything that the commission. Is going to make the commission feel more comfortable with regard to what's going on out there. Well, we and the applicant are willing to do, you know, we understand the concerns. But we're, we are where we are right now. We'd like to get this project and this site back on the right track to the extent that we can. And to have the commission comfortable by providing whatever. Again, they have to come and see you every month to report what's going on out there. Or provide monthly reporting on the material that's left the site. We're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Have we done any septic testing there for septic capacity and where is that at?
Yes, we have done several test pits. We've done, I'd say between six to ten test pits. So there's been a series over here, a series over here, and a series in the rear. So we've identified three potential septic areas that are not going to be disturbed as part of this application. So that we can preserve those areas for future development.
All right, what's the capacity of those?
It can accommodate, well, there's plenty of room here to, I don't have an exactly dependent on the flows that are required.
I mean, for the size of buildings that you're putting in and stuff.
We have sufficient flows for the length that you see on the concept plan.
See, we did a lot of, we did another concept plan and it turned into be a quarry. Understand, and, and so we have big concerns over that. I have big concerns over crushing. And so I have, I don't want, I want to know the hours of what you plan on crushing, how much crushing you plan on doing. And how long is that going to take? Or if, I don't even know if this commission is going to allow you to crush here. It may have to just remove the material the way it is. The other thing is how much blasting. Is going to be done. And are we going to do blasting study? See for the neighbors and everything like that around the property? Have we got it to that at all?
Usually requirement, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, when you go for a blasting permit, there are certain, I'm sorry, I'm too familiar with it. But I know you have to set out, like measuring meters and other things, and they have to do like a pre-blast survey. And there's all kinds of protocol when you go for that blasting permit that's from the fire marshals office.
Right, and I want to know what the hours of your blasting is going to be.
Also, we'll have to consider dust suppression for the.
Right, dust suppression.
Just wanted to know.
Yeah, no, that's true.
You shouldn't interrupt him. He interrupted you.
Also, the, the other thing, like you said, is like, the crushing could turn out to be a disaster over there. Because you have neighbors there. And there's neighbors all over that place over there.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. One thing I would like to point out is this is behind us in the rear, State of Connecticut. And other, like, we're surrounded on the woods by three sides. It's like hundreds of acres of.
Isn't there a lot of water back there?
On the other side of there, there's a development up on the other side down the road.
On the other side, there is, but there.
That's wide open. I know what side you're talking about, the back side.
Yep, and.
But I'm talking about, if you go down Garter Road, the left side, there's a bunch of houses. A bunch of houses, that's what looks like that problem. Crushes make a lot of noise.
Understood, yeah.
There's hours that you can crush and, and hours that I don't want you to be crushing. And so I think we're going to have to come up with a plan for that too. And the other thing with the scale, the scale to me is, turns out to be where it could turn out to where you're selling material. I understand what you're saying, that he's going to use it for himself. But on top of it all, when you have a scale there, that means that they want to weigh the truck when it comes in. They want to weigh the truck when it goes out. So if it's not this truck, if somebody else has good material there, I'm sure he's going to let a truck go in there. They're going to weigh it. He's going to sell it to them and it's going to move on to somewhere else. So basically, it turned into the quarry again. And then I want that to happen.
Understand, we've had preliminary discussions with our client about removing the scale. And we'll revisit those and see if that's a possibility.
Okay, you're going to leave this application open anyway.
Yeah, we'll go over it as we're closer. I appreciate the comments and we're going to.
All right, I'm good for now, Mike.
Yay, my turn. So here are my concerns. You ready? You got your notepad out? To the right, if I'm not mistaken, that's pretty level with the road. That water-ish, the wetlands area is pretty, pretty level with the road.
This area.
Now, I'm talking about up the road.
A little bit.
Up, yeah, so like as you're driving up Garter Road, it gets pretty wet over there and it's pretty level with the road. My fear, and when you blast, that radiates for long distances. Hence why you have to go to the neighbors and figure out what's going on. And if there's, you know, we've seen blasting at some other properties in this town. And it's affected neighbors and it's affected windows and siding and so on and so forth. My fear is the blasting and the amount that you're going to have to do, because I know this property. This property is, is, is like, is like when they landed on the Armageddon and they're trying to put a bomb in the middle of this thing. Try to explode it past earth. That's what this property looks like. So my fear is when you start blasting, how much are you going to affect the wetlands that are up the road a little bit? That's a big fear of mine. That, that scale. The scale alone tells me it's going to be a quarry. Doesn't matter to me what you say. That's a quarry. Okay, it just is. We know how this works. People come in with trucks. They say they're hauling for Mr. Grasso, which is very common. I don't, I'm assuming he gets big projects because he, you know, Pepper Street was a big project. And I'm sure he's going to have to have people haul for him and stuff like that, which is very common. And you see it all the time and, and with the scales there and people hauling and putting rock on, you know. Everything you're saying, you're just using different words to say quarry. It's all you're doing. And I get it. I know why you're not calling it a quarry because you're saying you're not selling. But there's, there's truly, at the end of the day, there's no way for us to figure out if you're selling or not. You could come in with your monthly reports and all that kind of stuff. There's still no way for us to tell if you're selling or not. There really isn't. You can explain to me until you're blue as your shirt. There's still no way you're going to convince me that, that, that it's not.
Just being honest. No, that's, that's a good point. I think, are we happy?
We're happier. Happier.
Leon's never happy.
Happier, right?
If we're worried about selling the material. And we're saying, the, the, the thing that's going to stop him from selling material is him not having a scale there.
Okay, listen, if I'm doing, if I'm doing, if I, if I'm doing a driveway per se. And I need, and I need gravel for my driveway. And I have my own facility, what do I need to weigh how much gravel I'm putting on my truck? Couldn't I just pick it up and bring it back to my facility when I'm done with it?
You definitely could. You definitely could.
So the scale tells me what?
There's projects that he needs to know how much material he's bringing to a job. Maybe he has.
If he brings too much, what does he do with it?
Does he, if, are there, are there projects in which there are unit costs assigned to material brought on a site?
I'm sure, but if it's his own stuff, what's he doing with the X-rays? He's just saying, hey, town of Monroe, ah, keep it? Or is he going to bring it back to his own place? So what, to him, if he's using that property to move material, it doesn't matter how much he moves.
You know, it's a, it's a, it's a point taken. We'll talk to our client. The scale can go away.
I appreciate.
I don't know that that solves anything here. I don't know that that solves.
Sometimes it solves peace of mind.
That's what I mean. If we're happy that, if we take the scale out and we're happy, happier about it, we're happy, we'll do.
My other concern is being a scenic route. Are all vehicles allowed on that route?
No prohibition against what vehicles and. It's an industrial site, zoned industrial.
Okay, just asking.
You're not going to restrict what kind of traffic is going to go in and out of a, a industrial site. If you wanted to do that, then you needed to not have it industrial. That's, but it's an industrial site. You can't zone, have zoning that allows a use and then say the user can't have the use. Because.
I'm not saying you can't have any use.
Right.
What I'm asking is, are all vehicles allowed on a scenic?
No prohibition.
That's a great answer. Thank you. Simple, simple question with a simple answer. So yeah, my concern is that blasting.
I may comment on that quickly. I know the area you're talking about. It is located pretty far away from the site. And currently, there's, there's nothing like come, sea bed or anything coming out of this slope that's there. And a lot of the water, if you look at my car stream up here, it pitches down this way and then runs this way. So that wetland up there is pitching away towards the.
But it's not that far. It's less than a mile from where.
That's a significant distance per se. It's not, I'm not saying that, yeah, I understand.
They're saying, but you were talking about, we're talking about serious rock. And so when you're doing some, you're going to have to do some, some pretty good blasting. That could radiate, is all I'm saying.
I understand your concern.
It's definitely.
I think we could, you know, the commissioners could certainly require a blasting plan from the applicant. You could request, you could require, you can request that as a condition of approval or whatever. You can do that. You could also, I think you could ask for, with regard to pre-blast surveys, how, you know, you can ask for how far out you go with those. There's some you could ask. I mean, we can talk about it. You know, these are things that if you're concerned about blasting, we can talk about. And I think those are some specific things that, you know, we'd be happy to do and, or, you know, however we manage that, but we can do that.
Yeah, and I'm torn on the crushing part, so I'm not going to comment on that yet until I'm more decisive.
And again, like the commissioner said, it's up to the commission to allow the crushing, or allow the waiver for the crushing.
Correct, and that's why I said I'm torn on it. And I'm going to wait to comment on that until I feel much more comfortable.
Would like to point out, you know, we are willing to put a berm along the road. And, you know, when they're crushing, this, this will be higher up in elevation.
If they're crushing?
If they're crushing. If allowed by this commission. Yeah, we'd be willing to put even a higher berm along the road or build. So right now, you would be down like twenty, thirty feet crushing from the road. So you're not on top, so the noise would theoretically be contained. And again, we are willing to even build a higher berm along the road if the commission wishes us to do so. To further trap that, because I'm assuming you're concerned about noise and of that.
I'm concerned about noise, concerned about dust.
So with dust, I will say our client does put sprinklers, dust control sprinklers.
Where are you going to, where's the water coming from?
There'll be some sort of de-watering going on in the site. They'll have to put or dig a, potentially a hole and use that as a watering source.
Like a well?
There might be, I'm not quite sure what that, we haven't worked out those details yet. But they do, I think, that thoughts of control sprinklers while they're crushing.
So, so noise? Blasting, it's loud. I mean, that's really.
That's what happened, but that's.
That's, I, I don't, I don't, I can't get hung up on if we allow you to blast. I can't also say it's got to be silent blasting, right? Like it's just, doesn't happen.
I mean, yeah.
I mean, I know there's probably things you can do to make it better, but it's blasting. So my concern is not really the noise, because we're probably gonna have specific hours that you can do that in. My, more my concern is how far it radiates out, are you gonna, is there potential damage to homes? Is there potential damage to, I mean, you are surrounded by wetlands, you really are. There's a lot of wetlands around you. There's just no way around it. So tho, those are my concerns about the blasting, and, and the dust, obviously, the dust going into the wetlands, going into people's yards, and so on and so forth. The noise, it's blasting. If we're gonna allow you to blast, I can't say, you know, do it quietly. Just, those two just don't go together.
Also, in terms of the, the dust, uh, they have a three thousand gallon water truck on site that they use to, uh, for the sprinklers and everything else, not.
Yeah.
Um, so, and the berm in the front, I mean, you know, we could go as high as fourteen, sixteen feet. Um, it's up to the commission if they were, if they were talking like that. You know, we're willing, we're here to, to work with you guys, um, and we are here to. We're trying to move this project, cut the project forward, obtain the correct permits, uh, provide open site. We're happy to come before the commission, provide progress updates, um, you know, we're, we're here to make this correct.
Correct. I'm good for now.
Commissioner Weston?
Well, I think, you know, we, as a commission, we need to assume that with the approval of this application and the waivers, we're looking at the potential of five years of crushing and blasting. Uh, most of my concerns have already been discussed on here. Um, has there been any blasting on this site to date?
For our client, no, I can't speak for the previous owner.
There was, there had to be, I think, based on the condition of the site as, as purchased, there was blasting, uh, predated our client's purchase of the site, yes.
Um, you know, taking, taking into consideration the history and, you know, the activities, um, that were performed on, on this area, you know, it seems to be like it's a functioning quarter, you know, uh, obviously with the scale on there, it's a no-brainer. So among, you know, everything else that's been set up here, that's, that's where we are with it. You know, what we wanna do going forward, we'll have to discuss, but it's clearly a quarry at this point, and, uh, we'll just have to make a decision during deliberations.
I kind of, yeah, I, everything I had concerns about has been voiced. Um, this scale, to me, screams quarry as well, and I think with another, I think you mentioned he had a, a scale close by another property. I mean, even if we don't, she's not saying no scale here, that property's a mile away. It's not that far for him to bring stuff there to, to weigh. The closest neighborhood is less than a quarter mile away, so houses are right there. So I just have, my same concerns have already been voiced, so. Anyway, I would wanna have a blasting plan in front of us, and, uh, some more information on that. That's all.
How long has he owned this property? I didn't, I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
A year or two, I'm not quite sure on the exact date, I apologize, but it hasn't been.
Should say two years, you know, it's, nothing's been done in those two years, other than what Scott Schatz signed, allowed him to do.
Right, not any other blasting or anything, and, and any, and any material he's taken out as far as blasted rock, he's, that was already, it was already done.
Right.
So the five thousand yards that were taken out of there were previously done by the.
Were those scales there when he bought the property?
There's no, no scale there, right now, there's no scale. So the scale is something we're asking for, so again, we're.
I would just, I would just, and speaking on my behalf and not the rest of the commission, I would just like to figure out, the, uh, the stuff with Rick about who gave him permission and why it's not in writing, or if it is in writing, let's just try to figure that out, please.
Okay, that's a separate issue.
I got one question more.
Still a free property.
Yeah. The, the problem I have with the blasting is that this commission, we don't control the blasting. It's all done through the fire marshal. And they don't need, the fire marshal doesn't need any special permission from this commission to allow blasting. He can go in there anytime he wants and get the blasting permit. And so if it gets out of control and we don't keep track of it, he can end up taking, you say a hundred thousand yards, he can end up taking three hundred thousand yards out of there, or four hundred thousand yards out of there, because we have no control over the blasting. Know that for a fact, because I've talked to the, the fire marshal about it, and not in the state of Connecticut, that allows this planning and owning commission to track the blasting. And so I can only get the reports when it's blast, but there's nothing that, we can never stop the blasting.
So to that point, we're, we're happy to come before you, uh, with, you know, surveying at a periodic standpoint and.
We're gonna have to come up with.
We're, that's, we're open to do that, again, we're, we're here to work with.
Well, I'm saying, you're gonna have to come up with a plan and submit it to this commission. And how long you think it's gonna take to remove a hundred thousand yards? How much blasting you're gonna do, is it gonna take a year, or is it gonna take six months? Or what? So you have to come up with some kind of a plan. Because I don't want it to turn into a five-year crushing operation to remove a hundred thousand yards.
Understood, and the, and the reports that, uh, you require as part of this execution filling permit is how we'll control the volume, right? So the reports will have a value.
No, I, there's a way for you to calculate it out, pretty much, to let me know how long you think it would take.
No, no.
Property to where that, that part of that, even if we allow that crushing to go on, or the blasting to go on, or whatever. Because when it comes to these conceptual plans without a building being put there, it, it, the building may never make it there. I mean, and then, so that's just something, we're just approving it for you just to level the site. Doesn't mean that the building's ever gonna come there, because we had that situation before. That's how we got into the other quarter, because it was conceptual, and it turned out to be a disaster. So this commission is pretty well willing to, just with, to make sure it just doesn't turn into that again.
We understand the sense of difference.
Okay.
All right, so, um, I just have one question, uh, from some of the aerials, it looks like there was, uh, a pit in the northern part of, um, central northern part of, that's full of water. Is that groundwater?
He, that is, um, I, that image is just when the rain, it just fills in, just happens to be a low spot, this, um, time this picture was taken.
What's the elevation?
We've, we've had our, uh, wetland scientists out there and flagged, and this is the only one that he.
No, but if you dig deep enough, you're gonna, you're gonna hit groundwater.
Right, right.
So you haven't hit groundwater there?
I, I don't know the source, I don't know how deep that, that pit is, personally.
Do you know the elevation of that pit?
Uh, I could, it's on the survey here, I'll only go to the plans.
We'll need to know that, because we've made special arrangements with another applicant for dealing with exposed groundwater and filling groundwater of what can go into a hole that is down to the groundwater level. And I don't remember the levels of the groundwater at the other. Four eleven.
That area looks to be about four twenty-five, or.
That was better. Yeah, but it doesn't mean.
Then the wetlands are at four fifteen.
And is this your survey?
This is our survey from a few months ago. So that, so that should be approximately ten feet above, so I'd say the water is, I'm, I'm, you know, not an expert, but I'm just saying, it appears if it's ten feet above the wetland line, that it could just be reflecting, uh, running.
Have you done, have you done any borings there to see if when you hit groundwater, have you done any of that?
Uh, we've done, like I said, a series of soil tests, um, along this back order near the wetlands, where the elevations are lower on the site. Uh, we've done a series of tests, it's here and here, um, and we have a rough idea of where the, the groundwater is.
Do you know what it is?
Uh, it's, I.
Groundwater was all, it was, was five feet plus below the grays where we were digging it. It's, uh, the, we did, the, the area where, where that water is showing is, is basically exposed rock right now. So there's, there. I would, I would agree with Chris that the, uh, that that picture probably indicates that there was some surface water that collected there. Water can infiltrate in because it's rock, so it sits there. I haven't seen that, a few times I've been out to the site, I haven't seen that, um, recently.
It could just be a low spot, too.
One last question. What is the proposed elevation of the finished site?
Uh, between four twenty-two and four twenty-four. There's some, there's, so right now, we're going, uh, there, so we have like a one and a half percent slope, so the water.
Basically, that low spot is where.
So that spot, yeah, that's what we were.
Decisive.
Correct, yep. And again, that, um, that spot is, uh, where the water's collecting is ten feet above the wetlands. So the water lands in the wetlands, so we should be well up and out of the groundwater. You expect the groundwater to be near that elevation.
What's the elevation on the road, what's that at?
So in this corner of the site, we're down around four oh eight, and then it climbs, and then we're up at like four twenty-five, and then as you go, continuing down Garter, this is about four forty, four forty-five here.
And so you're trying to get it all down to four eleven?
Four twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
I thought that was the, I think the, the driveway, existing driveway, elevation of the existing driveway is around four twenty-four. And so we're trying, the driveway now, if you've been out there, the driveway climbs pretty steeply up into the site. We're looking to get it to a path that basically is level with the road, at the existing driveway location, so that you drive basically level in from the road, uh, at where the existing driveway is. That, that's kind of, that, that's what's driving sort of the elevation, you know, and, uh, getting the, getting the site pad prepped to that, that kind of elevation. So you have some decent access in and out of the site, you're not climbing up a, a steep grade to get into the site.
Okay.
All right, well, that was my only question. Now we'll go to the public, if there are any members of the public. In attendance tonight, I would like to comment on this application. Please raise your hand, or any members online, please, uh, raise your hand online if you have any comments on this application in this, the first of our public hearings tonight. Seeing none, and the commissioners, I think, are good. You can go back to the applicant for any closing remarks and requests. All right, Chris? Think we have any more questions?
Uh, I think that's it, we appreciate the comments, I would like to continue, um, the hearing, like to talk with our client, address your concerns, and come back before the next meeting. Thank you.
We will continue this hearing. And, um, your flashlight's on. Let's go to the next public hearing. SCP twenty twenty-two dash oh eight, file number one six four eight A, this is four sixty-seven and four eighty-five Pepper Street. Commissioner Condon?
My name is Donnie Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held December first, twenty twenty-two, in accordance with CGS.
Eight dash seventy, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, December first, twenty twenty-two, uh, via Zoom and, uh, in-person attendance, Monroe Town Hall, SCP twenty twenty-two dash zero eight, number one six four eight, four six seven and four eight five, Pepper Street I one. Special exception permit for proposed site development associated activity at four eight five Pepper Street, four six seven Pepper Street, including construction of a nine thousand square foot manufacturing facility and operation of a fifty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-three square foot outdoor storage facility. Assessors map ninety-four, lot zero zero five, zero zero six, four eight five Pepper Street LLC owner, solely engineering LLC applicant. Uh, and notice was published and voices on Wednesday, November twenty-third.
I do refer Condon. And Rick, do you have a witness?
Lot of the application's stat, number two, health department, title stated eleven sixteen. Three revised plans from solely engineering dated eleven-two. Exhibit number four, uh, engineer review. Uh, it should be noted to the commission that the town is now using, uh, outside consultant. Uh, exhibit number five, return of certified mailings, that concludes the exhibits.
For the applicant?
Evening, uh, commission members, my name is Chris Palowski, on behalf of solely engineering, here for the applicant. Uh, office is located at five oh one Main Street here in Monroe. Here for seeking a special exception permit for four sixty-seven and four eighty-five Pepper Street in Monroe, Connecticut. So the oriented ourselves, uh, Route twenty-five runs north-south. If you come on, on the north on Route twenty-five, and then you may arrive at Pepper Street, uh, the property is located essentially in this vicinity, um.
Director, can you start the screen?
Thank you. So here's the town aerial, uh, again, Route twenty-five runs north-south, if you make a right onto Pepper Street, approximately a mile or so down the road, seven and four eight five Pepper. Now, let's resume in here, here's town of Newtown, top of Monroe, Route twenty-five, and then Pepper Street. Properties are located here. So this is an aerial of the site from two thousand and eighteen, I wanna say, I apologize who heard to not have a more updated aerial. Back in two thousand seventeen slash eighteen, there were two approvals secured for this site. There was inland wetlands approval and SCP approval, uh, and that was, uh, excuse me, for four eighty-five Pepper Street, uh, only. That's this property right here. Total back then was essentially the similar nature to what we're currently proposing. There was a four thousand square foot, approximately four thousand square foot, uh, manufacturing, just processing building, a series of, of covered storage bins, um, and a lot of similarities to what you currently see before you. Again, we did secure inland wetlands and landings on approval, um, back in two thousand eighteen, uh, for that site. Uh, our client, uh, again, was selected as the Pepper Street, uh, reconstruction contractor, and, uh, he needed more space for staging and other things, and he purchased, uh, four sixty-seven Pepper Street. Um, and we're here before you, uh, to seek essential exception permit to, uh, essentially expand the operation, um, onto four sixty-seven. It also allows for a bigger buffer, uh, from the wetlands and, uh, more space and an overall less intense development than would have been placed on four eighty-five Pepper Street alone. So before you now, um, and again, the, uh, permits that were issued in two thousand and eighteen have not been completed at this time, when it's been under construction. Wall that you see in the rear here is constructed, uh, there is some station work going on there as part of the Pepper Street reconstruction. But those permits are active, but have not been completed. Uh, the, the previous building has not been constructed as our client purchased a neighboring property, and then we are now before you, seeking an approval, um, for a different building, uh, um, four sixty-seven Pepper Street. So a little bit about, uh, what we're proposing here, uh, the site, uh, is Pepper Street runs along here. We are proposing an entrance, uh, here, um, to the north, as well as an entrance to the south. Uh, trucks will enter, and they will, um, use the hell, this is, uh, here, and then continue up, and material will be unloaded in this area. Uh, we have a series of material intake bins right here. There is also a screener, um, and another, uh, sorted pile here. Material will then be placed in these three unfinished material bins, and then it will be loaded, uh, into a series of crushing and screening and processing, um, conveyors inside of the building. And then the finished product will exit on the far side and be placed in the finished product bins. Um, so again, the material will be brought in, it'll be, the trucks will be weighed, uh, they'll come around here, the material will be offloaded, it will then be placed through a screener, and then it'll, uh, end up, uh, a couple of piles here, which will then be placed into unfinished material bins, which will then be loaded into a crushing, screening, processing, uh, operation inside of a building on four sixty-seven Pepper Street. And again, the property, the current property lines are, uh, the dividing line is shown right here. And this is four sixty-seven, this is four eighty-five. When it comes out of the, uh, processing building, it'll be placed in a series of finished product bins, uh, where we'll be on the sole of the site. So, uh, we have this yard right here, there's an existing office building, uh, currently being, that'll be maintained throughout duration of the project, uh, so that's located right here. We will be adding this employee parking as shown here, as well as a strip loading zone. Uh, there will also be a new nine thousand square foot processing building put on four sixty-seven Pepper Street as shown right here, and I do have a rendering of that building. Uh, we have been before the architectural review board, uh, that was last month. And, uh, we have a series of outdoor storage, uh, areas right here, as well as a smaller area in the rear. Uh, this outdoor storage area here, it will be used for equipment and other, um, items, whereas this area in the rear will be less frequently used, um, maybe just to store pipes and larger stormwater structures on a less frequent nature. And again, you would access that by going through here, and then down, um, there is a gap in the wetlands, so these are the gaps located in the rear of the site, in a small pocket here, you'll enter, comes out. This site is largely elevated, so Pepper Street is lower than the site. And it kind of climbs, and I'll get into the grading plans in a second. But this is kind of an upper pad, if you will. And you'll have a series of retaining walls, some of which are already built as part of the 485 Pepper Street approval. And that'll extend along the back of the yard area, if you will. So we'll start here. This has already been built up until about this point that you see right here. And then we're going to extend that along the back here. And all the operations take place in here, except for less frequent accessing basins and pipe materials in the rear. So here. As I mentioned, the grades, drainage plan, Pepper Street is lower. And then as you climb the site, as you enter the site, you have to climb, depending on the area. Where it has the secondary two pads here. So this pad is at elevation 430 to 435. Here's a ramp, drop down about five feet to an elevation of between 428 and 430 in this area. And again, this is where the material will be placed. There'll be, there'll be an initial screening, still without larger material, forward to go to an unfinished product bin, and then entering into the processing facility here, then exiting to the finished material. So the wetlands located in the rear are down about 15 to 20 feet from these upper elevation pads. So the way we designed the site was 8 to 10 feet from upper. This is between 50 to 75 feet, this area where I'm moving my cursor. And then essentially keep all of the activity heavily out, away from the wetlands. And again, the harbor for wetlands, they, the hearing is closed, and they are in the limitations on this application at this time. So this, all the activity, except for the less frequent accessing of various products, will be taking place in these upper elevation pads. The gradient climbs, as you enter the site, there's two elevation pads and then it drops 15 to 20 feet. And you have the wetlands in the rear of the site. And then you have this retaining wall that will be placed, half of which I would say is already built. And it'll be extended along this vicinity. Then we will break down a three to one slope and they're subjecting plantings and other landscape features. They'll be protected from the future. We have a series of stormwater treatment measures, all of which have been designed in accordance with 2004, according to Stormwater Manual. We have a water quality basin here. We also have a large stormwater basin in this vicinity. They both outlet toward the existing wetlands, as shown here. There's one outlet, a level spreader, and then one here. One interesting thing that we did when we went through the wetlands process, we added a permanent sedimentation site here. So if there is any sediment runoff, there's, this is a concrete permanent anti-tracking debris with leaves. That would conjunction with the previous town that signed this. So as the trucks will, if any mud or anything that's clattered tires will be kicked off and directed to this permanent sedimentation basin. There is a people loophole that's wide enough for a loader. So a loader will enter, take a loophole and scoop out that sediment from time to time. And as you see on the 2.21, our rating and drainage plan, there is a stormwater maintenance and operations section that describes all the stormwater maintenance and operation measures that are in place and will be in place throughout the duration of this project. So we have two large ponds, one large pond in the back and a pond here. This permanent sedimentation basin as well as stormwater basin in the front. We also have a small underground system here. We have a series of hydrodynamic separators. We also have oil separator that'll handle any runoff that he will from inside of the building. I would also like to point out that all of the equipment on this site is equipped with dust control sprinklers. I will get the utility plan in a minute, but there's water lines that run throughout to all these outdoor storage bins that you see here. They're going to be used to store aggregate. So you see all of these bins, these will be your aggregate materials. Whereas like the concrete storage, outdoor storage areas here will be for loaders, trucks. And this area is for catch basins and stormwater pipes. Anywhere you see these bins will be used for aggregate material. So again, this is the stormwater management plan. We have the two ponds in the rear, the one pond slash seven feet in the front. And the small underground system here. All the water on the site is directed through a series of hydratic separators or water quality units. Both of these ponds, again, in conjunction with town engineer, we added sediment four bays. So there's two, you'll see this open point here between the bins. We added a gate so they can drive the loader down here. And then there's a sediment four bay, so the loader again can scoop out the sediment on a periodic basis. While this is prescribed in our stormwater maintenance and operations plan. And you can see the same thing on this side of this storage area. You have a gate and they can access this basin to maintain it on a periodic basis. Other, as we went through the wetlands process, they wanted us to make sure this area was, it wouldn't expand in the future. So as you come down the site here, this is again 15 feet higher than this area down here. And then ramp down on both sides of this ramp, there are Jersey barriers are posted. That's currently what's out there on one side. We're only, we're extending those and we'll put a few more on the opposite side. And that'll keep that area from growing in the future. And also this entire outdoor storage area in the rear is enclosed by fence and also has some Jersey barriers as well. Let's see, soil erosion, sediment control. So both entrances will have anti-tracking pads that will keep the mud on the trucks as they're operating on site from entering the roadway. We also have significant silt fence and hay bale backing all along to protect this wetland as well as on this side. We have a series of diversion swales that will direct the water to the seven traps, one, two, three, and then one in the front here. All the catch basins will have silt sacks in them. We have a material stockpile while they're going through construction with facilities. It's a pile of any topsoil that's on site. So there's a series of soil erosion, sediment control measures that we designed and will be implemented as part of this plan. Again, these are all designed in accordance with the 2002 soil erosion, sediment control manual. And you see the LOD here that goes around our outside of our disturbance. And I'll get to the landscape plan in a minute, but this site has both a 50-foot front landscape buffer requirement, which we are honoring, as well as a rear 50-foot landscape buffer requirement. As the rail trail for the town of Monroe is in the rear of the property. We want to make sure that there's a significant buffer from that and as well as from Pepper Street. So this is our utility plan. As I mentioned before, all of these outdoor storage bins and crushing equipment, or crushing equipment isn't here, excuse me, the screening equipment will all have dust control sprinklers that will operate on an as news basis. Inside of the building, there's also dust control sprinklers. They're like a mist, if you will. So that keeps the dust down when they're processing the material there. We are proposing small septic system down in the front here for this existing office building. There will be no bathroom facilities or restroom facilities in this crushing, processing building. So there's no septic system proposed for this building. We have electric and water that's coming into the site, certainly existing office. There's also going to be a fuel storage tank proposed in this vicinity. And that's going to be blocked off by concrete blocks. And that's the fuel, the equipment that's going to be used on site. I think that's all from your technical standpoint. So again, there's gas, water, electric, all for the existing office building. The septic system, we've done soil testing on this property as part of the previous approval. And we will seek the appropriate approvals of the Monroe Health Department for that septic system. And it has already, the system was already approved previously as part of the previous application. And again, all the bins will have dust suppression on them and on the screening equipment and inside the building, on the processing equipment. Now onto the landscaping here, plan here. As you can see, we have quite the robust landscaping plan along that 50-foot buffer, as I alluded to in the front of the site. We have another significant amount of landscaping plants in the rear of the site we're disturbing. See all those trees here. And then we also have a number of trees and shrubs and other landscaping plants proposed between the wall on the slope and the wetland edge. Again, this is about 50 to 75 feet from where the back of that wall is to that wetland edge, depending on where you are throughout the site. This is existing wooded vegetation on the backside of these bins here. It's going to remain the same thing along this property border here. And then we do have some more trees and landscaping along that 50-foot setback to the rear where we are disturbing. All the basins are water quality basins, so they'll be seeded and established. Sediment four bays, as you see here. And that is our landscaping plan. And one thing I would like to highlight here, this is our material wall detail. So wetlands commissioners had a concern that, let's see, back up. In this area, when the loader was picking up material to be placed in the screener, that they were concerned that they would push the material over the wall and that that would fall to the bottom half of the wall and potentially impact the wetland. So in response to that, we came up with this material wall detail here. So the material stockpile as it's brought into the yard will be dumped here. So the loader's coming from the right side of your screen going this direction. And we have concrete block or mafia blocks staked on this side. And then we have an inch and a quarter, inch and a half crushed stone revetment on the backside. And you see the retaining wall here. So as the loader is coming, he not only has the concrete blocks, he also has the stone revetment. And then we also have PVC pipe that extends high up above that wall. So if you're from the loader, you see, you can see the pipe. So if the pipe is knocked over, you wouldn't see it anymore while you're operating. So this will prevent the material in on this side of the wall, the concrete block material bins, from going over that retaining wall, potentially impacting the wetlands. So on the plan, if I were to show this, let's see. So material is placed here, the loaders, these two are for scale are roughly the size of typical loaders. Would go this way, pick up the material and that detail that I just showed would be on this side. So they're pushing against it and you also have the stone behind it. And you also have the warning pipes. So if you don't see the, if you see pipes picking up anymore, then it's been knocked over and you need to stop. But that was what we came up with to address those concerns. So again, the whole purpose of this is to keep all the activity up on this, on these pads as we've shown. And it would kind of enclosed, if you will, in this general vicinity. And with that, again, I apologize, this is the only area I can obtain, but this is what the site looks like in 2018. And there has been some activity in this general area, like in the wall was built. Some other items were installed as part of those 2018 approvals. Thank you, and I would open up to, open up to questions at this time.
Okay, let's start with the commissioners. Let's start on my left this time.
Thank you, Chris, for your presentation. So I wasn't on the commission back when this was first approved, but I know we said it was approved in 2018 and they did soil testing back then. Any recent soil testing done since it's been used in the staging area and things have been moved around a little bit?
We've done some soil testing for the stormwater basins. The area that was proposed to be a septic as part of that approval, there hasn't been a large impact to or anything like that. It's located in this general vicinity of the site. But we will coordinate with the health department to make sure that everything is up to their standard. They'll ultimately have to sign off if the system is installed.
All right, no other questions right now? Thank you.
Thank you.
The intake bins, product brought in from off-site, period. Not moving any of the materials that are on-site now.
Correct. And we have a list of that material on the sheet, I believe 2.11 or 2.21. It's aggregate material. So there's not going to be like, like, or anything like that. It's strictly aggregate products. There's a list of such on that sheet.
Do you have a rendering of the 9,000-foot building?
Yes. This is what that building would look like. Again, it did come through the architectural review board. The building will be, won't be too visible from the street because the street is sunken down. And then we have that equivalent landscape buffer, which will happen, is packed with trees and plants and shrubs. So you, you won't be, if you're driving, it's a couple of good 10 to 12-foot slope when we root that pad. And then again, that whole slope is going to be planted. But this is what the rendering looks like. I believe we changed in the colors a little bit based off the architectural review board's comments. But the colors are finalized. This is the general shape, though. So you know, this is where garage doors will be open and all, when they're loaded. And all the, you know, processing take place in this.
You have any idea the approximate, that's what Paul is saying?
Don't at this time, but that's the reasoning for the building. The reason for the building was to, was to keep, was to keep the noise, to control the noise, so.
That's all I have.
Storage bins, they're open?
That is correct.
There's no covers to them, correct?
That is correct. So under the regulations that were passed, I believe it's 40% of the slot area is allowed for outdoor storage. I don't think we're close to that, but there is, we did utilize that. In the previous plan, they were covered because we weren't allowed to utilize much outdoor storage. So there.
You had a building there before that you were going to have like sliding doors or something like that, right?
Right, essentially that building is actually moving over here, increasing size.
And that's where you're doing your crushing.
Now that crushing building, that has a filtration system, I'm assuming, of some sort?
Yeah, so there's, there's like floor drains and there's an oil grit separator that's involved. So anything gets collected in that oil grit separator for the stormwater system. And then we like to call it treatment train in civil engineering. So there's several aspects that treat that water before it eventually gets started. You have oil grit separator, you have hydrodynamic separators, you have sediment control quality measures, you have sediment four bays, you also have alley control structures and level spreaders, all treating the stormwater before it eventually exits the wetland.
And then when it exits, the wetland is.
It's.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe when we approved it the first side, it was going to be a street sweeper that ran daily?
That will be, that's on the equipment. That's part of this plan as well.
So you'd still the plan to run that daily?
Correct.
Obviously, they're going to be selling material, correct?
That is correct.
We have hours of operation?
It's standard, I would, I can get them. I don't know if they're on the plan at this moment, but it's 7:30 to 4:30. Nothing, I don't know, the ordinary.
And they'll never need to use this for emergency midnight job or something like that, correct?
I don't anticipate that. I can't speak for our client, but I'm sure I could ask.
There's going to be lighting throughout the facility?
Correct, there's some wall packs in the buildings, nothing too crazy.
You don't have like light holes or any of that?
I don't think there's too much of that. Mostly around the building. It's my intent to be operated at night, if you will, it's a day operation. That's why I always, it's strictly limited. Yes, I believe it's included.
No, if you're not, if you're not doing, if you're not doing wall, I mean, if you're only doing mounted units.
Yeah, so we just have a few on the building here and then along the office. So mostly, because again, it's not.
Not at night. I just wanted to make sure, that's all.
No worries.
I really like the, the plantings for the rails to trails thing. That's, that's awesome. That's good. Down there is kind of, kind of hidden from the, you kind of buffer it, which is really good. How often are you going to clean, are they planning on cleaning the sediment?
There's, so you look on sheet 2.21. Right here. Right here. Sorry, I'm just going to flip through. There's an operations and maintenance plan, which describes when to clean things, when to inspect things. It's all detailed there. We'll be doing periodic inspections of the site. So, and it's going to be maintained. Because essentially, when we explain this is a wetlands, it has to be maintained. Because if it backs up, the site's going to become a mess, and they're not going to be able to operate. So in addition to the operation and maintenance plan, there's also the inability to operate the site unless they maintain.
Correct. I'm good.
Mr. Ambrosi.
All right, you don't have a recent copy of this property? You don't have the way it is now?
A recent picture?
Yeah.
I still have an area. I looked on Google and they have it as they had.
So you have a cease and desist on both these properties?
I'm not sure.
The one on the left?
485?
Because it dealt with, it dealt with the wetlands.
So 487, there's nothing on 487?
485 and 467.
45.
485 there is, right?
No, 467. 45, I'm sorry, you're correct.
45, right. So 467 has been disturbed already, that property, right?
They're using that as a staging area for the Pepper Street reconstruction.
That's where they got Scott's shot line.
I don't know about using it as a staging area, but they are.
They are, because they got Scott's shot line's approval about.
Now, that was the.
It's also, it's also for this.
Not this one?
No, they're using staging for both.
No.
That is, they're using staging for both properties.
Oh, really?
They just purchased this property.
I wouldn't say.
Hi, good afternoon, it's Joe Grasso again. So recently, we were forced to do a road shutdown for over a weekend in order to eliminate the bypass road on Pepper Street, which happened to be right in front of 45. Because we lost access to our property at 45, we were using 467 to enter in and out of the property, the staging property. So the disturbance on 467 would be the entrance. And again, that would be in benefit of the Pepper Street reconstruction project.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, so. Why not, because we got called by people. I did get called by constituents in our town, because they walked the path there. It was way behind here where it got disturbed. It wasn't in front, it's behind, it got disturbed, right?
I can't, I know that we did test it out there, but I can't speak to what's happening on the site. I apologize.
So my question to you is, you have it as a recycling facility. You don't allow recycling?
It's a processing facility.
Recycling and aggregate?
That's the name of the company. But they're not running a recycling.
All right, what kind of material do you plan on?
There's a list.
I don't have the list, I looked on that.
That was one of the items that Wetlands asked us to include on the plan. So we are looking at screened topsoil, various sizes of stone, process aggregate, process subbase, a larger process aggregate, bedding sand, and screened common fill.
That's a larger process aggregate.
So you're looking at four-inch size versus one.
What does that have in it?
I'm sorry?
What does that have in it?
Joe, if you wouldn't mind speaking to the products?
Yeah, larger process aggregate would be road base, recycled, recycled road base version, road base. So trap rock, topsoil, whatever you.
Concrete?
Yes, concrete, blacktop, brick, recycled, recycled process.
You plan on recycling blacktop here?
It's, yes, recycled road materials.
So the last approval that we gave you on the site was just for crushings, rock. Because it was going to be done in here. Now, this is going to turn into be, you're going to crush road base. You're going to crush aggregate, which is cement. Does that have rebar in it?
I'm not quite sure. Again, the intent here is not to run, like taking building debris or anything of that nature. It's strictly.
No, I have the intent. The intent goes with the property.
We're making, we're making construction, we're not recycling construction debris.
You're making out of recycled construction debris, right?
No, we're recycling road aggregates.
And what, that could be a wide branch of stuff. I'd like to know what kind of aggregates we're doing.
Rock, concrete, asphalt, brick.
Concrete with rebar in it?
No.
Digging, are you going to? Where are you getting the concrete from then?
Sidewalks, curbs. Road materials. We're not taking building concrete, we're taking sidewalk and curb concrete.
Are you going to bring in asphalt, recycled asphalt?
Well, if we're moving a parking lot or a customer ours is moving a parking lot, we try not to take that material. But if needed, we'll take it in and recycle it and turn it into road base. It's a widely used product for parking lots, driveways, and roadways.
The intended operation is the same what is previously approved. So if they have a road, they go in there, they remove those materials, they bring them to this site, they process those materials, and they turn it into a finished product.
It seems previously approved?
The 2018 plan. It's the same intent as what we were previously going for.
I was here.
I remember.
I don't remember bringing in asphalt. I don't remember bringing in, it was basically just rock, and it was going to go into the crusher. That's basically, there wasn't going to be a screener on the property. There wasn't going to be any of that. We even have, you don't even have equipment list of what's going to be on this property that I can see.
I believe we have a construction equipment slash storage items, and we also have an aggregate material.
You have an equipment list? What number, what page?
2.11.
What kind of equipment are you going to have on there?
In terms of. Loaders.
Loaders, excavators, what are you going to have on there?
We have loaders, excavators.
How many?
We can list that.
We need that on the plan.
No worries.
The other thing is, I have an issue with crushing. Like, this is too wide of a broad of a thing for me. Because you're bringing in asphalt, you're going to crush asphalt, recycle asphalt. You're going to, if you're getting into screening, you're getting into aggregate, you're getting into concrete. And concrete with rebar is not clean fill, I can tell you that right now. And so there's got to be some kind of a product list that you plan on doing here. I mean, it's like, you know, because we have to keep an eye on this. It's going to turn into be a recycling facility that this town doesn't allow.
That's not our intent, I believe.
I know that's not your intent. Like I said, but it's too broad for me of what you plan on doing here. Like, I think the original approval, now you have the bins. You have the bins, and you increased the size of bins to storage, because we increased the outside storage. I have all that. And so you could store a lot of material. And that wasn't our intent in the first place, because it was going to be a small operation, which never really has ever got done. We haven't done anything on that property, except for maybe build the retaining wall. But there's been crushing on that property, could probably end up having a cease and desist. And I understand that, you know, you got onto the project at Pepper Street, but this property really has never got developed. The way I look at it, this property should have been developed. And if you want to move on to the next property, then once this was done, we can move on to the next one. But now we're going to incorporate all this again and start all another five-year process. My question is, is that I don't want this to turn into be a recycling facility. And recycling facility means that you're going to end up taking, crushing it, and then what good material you use and what bad material or metal you get out of it, that you're going to end up selling that off, that goes on to a different section. Then that turns into recycling. And I don't want this property to turn into that.
I understand.
And the way it looks, the way this process that you have here, it looks like it's going to be a recycling facility. And when he says he brings in aggregate, aggregate's a broad thing, I mean, it's broad. And you know, and then you're saying you're going to bring asphalt off the roads? We have big concerns about asphalt.
I understand the concerns we'd be having.
The concerns with it being filled in our waterways. We have concerns with it ended up on the Plonic River, that's fine here. You understand what I'm saying? So we have big concerns over that. And that's like something in the material list, some of that stuff I don't think this town really wants.
I understand. Again, we're simply trying to extend the permit that was previously issued on 45 Pepper.
I have that, but you're extending it and adding all this other stuff to it. You're adding aggregate, you're adding this. We approved this, I believe, right? We approved it on rock, just basically rock.
There's no mention of the materials in the original approval. It doesn't matter what the original approval states, this is a whole new ballgame.
And so this could turn into be a recycling facility, whether you look at it that way or you don't. You know, it's.
Maybe they can, maybe they can make a list of stuff that they want to bring in and we can.
Other than that list?
Like a specific list of stuff that they want to bring in, and then we can say yea or nay.
We're happy to provide a specific list of the material.
Because we did that with Mr. Carp at the quarry.
You don't even have, they didn't just go around your approval yet anyway, right?
There are deliberations.
Yeah.
This is staying open?
Yeah, we're not seeking to close this tonight.
I have very, I have concerns.
Maybe, maybe you could, I'm sorry.
The bins, the bins are all made out of, out of what?
Concrete block.
Concrete block. And how, you've got those all pinned or no?
They'll be pinned as needed.
You pinned with what, rebar?
Yes, I suppose, as needed. So in this instance, the grates higher up here, so you won't need to pin these blocks. You'll be pushing against soil when they're using the loaders.
No, I have that, but I've been talking about it in the back section of it.
Yeah, the back section, they'll have to pin them and secure them along here.
They could secure them with rebar, what's wrong with that? I think you should care one rebar, yeah, no, they didn't have them secured with rebar, this town.
You said they were pinned?
No, now he's going to do it. I didn't have it.
You don't have a detail of that.
They don't have a detail of that.
Add a detail.
It's just block and rock, there's no rebar, isn't it?
But in the.
I need you to come up with some kind of a list of what you plan on bringing in there, what you plan on processing. I mean, I need that kind of list, because I'm going to hold to make sure that that's maintained.
Understood. You do have a problem with the trim.
That's all I have for now.
Mr. Ambrosi.
I'm all set, thanks.
Mr. Man.
I have one question.
Same questions again.
How would you prevent from going into a recycling plant?
So a number of ways we can do that. We're not going to, we're going to have a specific biometric. We're also going to, the Wetlands Commission has already asked for doing the inspection and delivering on Pepper Street. So that's another check and balance place. We're happy to provide in updates. There's, it's not in the interest of our client to do that type of operation. I understand your concerns, and we're going to provide as many safeguards we can to ensure that none of it happen. And we're happy to work with you guys on those safeguards.
I know my colleagues have asked you a list of items that you're going to bring in. What about a list of items that you're not or are going to exclude?
That would be helpful, we'd be happy to provide.
Such as, are you going to be getting bricks?
I don't, I don't believe so, but I'll tell our client on that, so.
You don't plan on bringing in any demolition material?
No, there's absolutely no like demolition, D, debris, or anything like that. That is not the intent of this.
But the other thing, too, is when you bring in material, you're going to have a word that material came from?
I believe so, but again, I'll tell us our client. These are feeling these questions, I will, we're going to reconvene with our client and come back to you guys with answers.
Okay.
Continuing on my question is, very important, if you're going to bricks, I'd like to know how you're going to treat it, what are you going to do with it? Are you going to bring in glass?
No, there's no glass.
How will you prevent, are you going to be accepting material from other contractors?
I'm not sure if anyone asked me that question as well.
Okay. And they've asked you, and you said yes, providing an equipment list?
Yes, absolutely. Provide that on our revised plan set. There'll be an equipment list, more detailed area list, and a list of items that will not be accepted in this facility.
Your operation is really borderline of being a recycling plant, okay? You've got to be more specific in telling us how you're not going to go that far.
Understood. Again, we'll make sure we can provide every safeguard as we can, and we'll work with the commission as well for additional safeguards as needed. And again, that's not our intent. We're not here, we're seeking to extend the previous permit onto 467 Pepper Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah, I guess you must have just got.
Yeah, so we had comments from Scott looking at the tires. We addressed all those comments when we were in Wetlands. There we discussed them today from Titan Bond.
Yes.
And we'll work through those comments, and we'll incorporate those revised plan set and address the concerns that have been raised tonight.
Okay.
So as far as the original SEP, the only thing that has been done is the partial retaining wall?
Yeah, I would say that this portion of the site has been disturbed, and this retaining wall's been constructed to about this point.
That's about it.
That's, they haven't built any of the bins, or the building was supposed to go in this vicinity, and it's not been. That's not been constructed. This area is largely disturbed.
From staging for their construction.
Staging, yeah, but then when they were building this retaining wall, so this whole area was brought up to the grates and whatnot as part of that grade's approval.
And we'd just like to have a list of vehicles that will be kept on the site.
Understood. Happy to provide that.
Go ahead. That screener and all the other stuff going to be enclosed?
So the screener is not enclosed, all the processing material, all the processing equipment and crushing and anything else like that will be enclosed. The screener is just an initial, you know, to sort out the rocks.
The screener runs all the time, the screener's loud. You're not going to enclose that screener?
The screener is not going to be enclosed, and it's not loud compared to the processing.
Screener does.
Understood.
This is an operation that goes on every day?
Correct.
For all these years?
Correct.
Like they're just putting the screener in, or using it for a little while, they screen their stuff, and the topsoil goes down, and it's on a project, and it's gone. So that people that live in that neighborhood over there, and that screener's going to be, and then you got to worry about dust. It's controlled there.
All those equipment, all the bins, everything's got sprinklers, it's just that's why I don't have a plan. Go ahead.
And I had a thought. In dealing with Scott's line, in the engineering, was it your office's line?
That is correct. Yep.
You were the one who received the okay, go ahead.
No.
He's referring to the stage. They have nothing to do with it.
Oh, sorry, I apologize. We don't have anything to do with that, thank you. Scott offered engineering comments as part of the Wetlands process, and we addressed and resolved before we retired. And then he passed the baton to Titan Bond for planning, so I'm going to just receive comments today.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't, I apologize.
All right, let's go to the public. Are any members of the public here today that would like to comment on this application? Or any members of the public online that would like to comment on this application? Please raise your hands now. Any members of the public, online or in person, that would like to comment? Please make yourselves known. All right, seeing none. Commissioners have any other questions? Staff have any questions?
I think Kevin Sully should buy you lunch tomorrow.
He must think so.
Listen, buy him lunch, Kevin.
Thank you for your time. We'd like to continue this to the next.
All right, then we will continue this hearing until next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, so final public hearing tonight is another excavation fill permit submission. This is filed, this is EFP 2022-02, file number 109. This is 909 Main Street. And, Condon.
Planning and zoning commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice public hearing to be held December 1st, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting and in person at Monroe Town Hall. EFP 2022-02, file 109, 909 Main Street, I-1, excavation fill permit application for proposed grading for future building and parking area and access to property from Route 25, along with site improvement for site development, assessments map 103, lot 014. For co-construction owner, Mercurio applicant. Notice was published twice in voices on Wednesday, November 16th, and Wednesday, November 23rd.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon and Rick.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, three exhibits. First exhibit is the application. Second is the certified mailings received. Third is the town engineer's report of September 29th. And Mr. Chairman, before we start the hearing, I just want to read the public hearing and notification requirements. So.
Go ahead.
Do we know what is required? Public hearing shall be required for special exception permit, which is this is being processed under. Such hearings shall commence within 65 days and shall be completed within 35 days unless extensions are granted. Notice of the public hearing shall be published in a newspaper twice as just read by the secretary. Applicants shall send a copy of the notice of public hearing as provided by the planning and zoning department to all property owners within 100 feet. Such notices shall be sent by certified mail return receipt no later than 10 days before the public hearing. Copy of associated certified mail receipts shall be provided to the planning and zoning department. And Mr. Chairman, the applicant provided a list of all the property owners within 100 feet and submitted copies of the certified mail receipt. I also have a copy of the payments made to the post office. Applicant is here. Can you please submit your return receipts for the record? Okay, the staff has a copy of the green cards. And just for the record, there were a total of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 properties that fell within the 100 foot. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And for the applicant tonight, you'd like to speak to the commissioner.
Could I have you, you've been quaffing online. Could I have you keep a distance, please? I'm sorry? Could you keep the distance respectfully?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just six feet distance, please.
Yes, how can I help you?
Boy, you're here. Tell us what's going on. We saw you not that long ago, and...
Yeah, Mike, to state your name and we approved.
Right, my name is Mercurio Porco. We came in for a brief site improvement.
Right. Right.
We wanted to clear up any kind of gray areas because we had not sent out the green cards for certified mail. So we retracted. Dominic, you were here for the last meeting. We retracted the application, and we went to reapply. We have received all the green cards, all but one, which was Rebecca Chase. She's right here.
Okay, so your application was approved, wasn't it?
It was re...
Well, we, no, it's unofficially approved. It had to get reopened.
No, I mean before.
It was approved, and then the...
Yes. Are there any changes in the application from the previously approved application?
This commission took action to rescind that approval.
Yes. Any changes?
No.
Okay, so it's the same exact application?
Same thing.
Okay, so nothing else to present? Okay. Do any commissioners have any questions regarding this issue? Why he's back and...
Well, I just have a question. I didn't, I wasn't here for your approval.
Okay.
What happened to all the topsoil on the property? Is it there?
Yeah, we hit. That particular site is, needs a lot of fill. So all the topsoil, all the rock is being maintained on property.
Still on the property?
Yeah.
Where's that at? Because I went by there, I didn't see it. I didn't know where it was.
Probably in the hole. Because it has huge cavity.
All right. And the other question I have to ask you, where is the fill coming from?
It's a very good question. Some of the select fill that I intend to bring in has to be certified to withstand a structure. So right now, we are in discussion with Rizal Construction that is processing the construction on exit 11, again, which is a state project. We're trying to acquire that paper material. State releases it. If it doesn't, I own property that has bankman ground. We're going to import it from there. We have a lot of people driving by offering, I will give you this, I will give you that. But I can't put any kind of material that is going to hinder that particular property because ultimately, I'm liable for it.
No, I understand. And this town is kind of concerned about what fill is going to come into this. We need to have, you know, paperwork or whatever, what kind of fill. I'm not hoping that was part of your application or not.
Correct.
Was it?
Mm-hmm.
So as long as we know it's clean fill and we did documentation on it?
Yeah, he's, he was, if I remember, he was willing to follow the guidelines and...
I was going to ask a couple of questions.
The worst thing that I can do as a property owner and a person that sells the property is provide a product to someone else that's inferior, that could have a problem actually later on.
So basically, all the material that you said is still on the property? And you moved anything out of it?
There's probably, no. There's approximately 6,000 yards that has to come in.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
You want to bring proper fill with documentation that we require, right?
I'm sorry?
You want to bring in proper fill?
Yes.
Documentation that we require?
Correct.
Yeah, that was, you're 100%. Yeah, it was part of his approval.
Commissioner Condon, skip over you?
No, I'm good. I was at all the other meetings. I have perfect attendance.
Wow. Such an angel. Cheers, oh my God.
So now we're going to go to the...
I guess when you have nothing else going on.
Hold on, this is one meeting, it was COVID.
I guess when you have nothing else going on in your life, you can make them all.
We're going to go to the public now. Are there any members of the public here or online that would like to comment on this application?
I would.
Please step forward and state your name and address.
Absolutely. My name is Rebecca Wood. I am located at 895 Main Street. And I believe there are some other participants and agents and property owners at both 885 Main Street and 901 Main Street that should be online, Barry and...
I'm going to ask for...
All right. So.
You can go ahead.
I do believe that. And the problem that we encountered, and I have known Mike Porco, and I sold him the property. I've known him for 22 years, is that we never received any, any of us, none of us received certified notification until this very last notice for the December 1st. And then I never received it, but Habernan received it, and Umberto received it. But at the point in time when we would have had due process and had the opportunity to react and provide input, we didn't have that because we weren't looking in the newspapers. We weren't, you know, we would be expecting to see a certified notice. And so when I spoke with council yesterday, they assisted me, and they noticed that the notices that went out at the 9:15 and at the 10:06 meetings were kind of cutting pace jobs, where you had last name come a first name, and they weren't sent to real people. So none of us received them. And so based on that, you can't imagine that anyone like us that has 25 acres of residential farming property would not have a reaction to 2.9 acres of commercial I-1 and what they might be doing. There's just no way. You know that there's not, not a chance that we wouldn't have wanted to have some input. It's illogical. And so based on that, I think the last, the only two people who received a 91 certified notification were Barry and Allison Habernan at 885 Main Street, and Umberto and his family at 901. I never did. And that was for this meeting. Previous to that, no one received anything. And so this is kind of like a Band-Aid. This is where we have to come in and try and figure out what on earth went wrong. And it doesn't fix what went wrong. And that was 9:15, where we would have had the opportunity under due process to present our case, to talk to you, to say, I've been a part of the land use department for a number of years as a recording secretary. So for me, I know the hoops of fire that people had to jump through, where everybody had to be evaluated, whether it was inland wetlands or zoning board of appeals, or whether it was the PNCs. I knew that, it never occurred to me that that would not be a consideration because I, I know so many of you not sitting in, not standing in this position, but sitting over there, that I knew that what you went through, and I know the hard job you have. But we never had that opportunity. So now, here we are scrambling. And when I spoke with Rick Schultz, I mean, he said, well, you're going to be offered this opportunity tonight to either go forward or to, and present, or say, we've got to just do it right. You know, go, go back to. And to be honest with you, I didn't prepare packets for all of you because I wanted, I wanted to make sure we went back, stepped back, and make sure that we started at the right step. And we started where everybody got their notification. Why is it that two of the families got it for this 12-1 notification? And I didn't? Why is it that before this, no one else got anything? Where we would have had, you know, we would have had input. 25 acres of residential farming. I know we have a POCD. I know that we would love to have, you know, all that area just boxed up neatly, but it isn't.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments. So as far as I understand, you're correct. There was a problem with the initial notifications. That's why the initial approval was voided. I believe you've, correct me, Ricky. Hasn't everyone been duly notified this time around?
Yes, for the record, Mr. Chairman.
And has there been sufficient...
The, the notices were sent out to the correct property.
And has there been sufficient time between that and now for the property owners to prepare any kind of argument or any questions regarding this property?
And Mr. Chairman, it should be noted that this is not a state statute, but a local zoning regulation.
It is, yes.
And I have had instances where this has occurred, and the chairman has made a determination that it's in the best interest to proceed with the public hearing because the parties that are affected were in attendance. So you want to factor that in. She, you know, she's here tonight. Rebecca Wood is here tonight.
Yes.
But it's, it's up to the commission how you want to proceed.
All right, so if you, this is your time, you and your, and the other neighbors, to question the applicant or make any questions to us. Actually, not to the applicant, to us, and we can bring it to the applicant.
Well, you see, there's, therein lies the problem. Because when I spoke with Rick Schultz, he said that I would be asked to either have it continued or defer it to January where we, where we would present it.
And that'd be for more time.
Yes. And so while I have, you know, a drive, I don't know that all the other parties are really on board, and they were ready for this. And so I want to make sure that, I'm just a little confused because I always, I was just going by, you know, what I was told.
Yeah, the requirement is to be notified by mail. If you don't, if you lose it, or don't pick it up, or don't get it, or whatever, that's your responsibility. The applicant is only required to notify the abutters, which has. A sufficient time has passed from that notification to this hearing.
But my question, Chairman.
Go ahead.
Is that given that there are three of us, and we have 25 acres of residential farming that has been in existence for over 120 years, and there's 2.9 acres of commercial I-1, and why wouldn't we want to have input into that?
Okay, well, this is your time for the input.
But you see, you know, people don't, I, I don't understand that, you know, when I spoke, I was told that it was either, I would be given the choice of either deferring it or presenting it. I would be given the choice of either deferring it or presenting it.
Well, the commission, I believe, can continue the hearing if the commission has a.
It's your call, Mr. Chairman.
How long have you had the notification?
I have never received a notification.
Is she in the?
Yes.
So long.
The applicant has, has complied with the notification.
For the receipts on the receipts.
But I never received it.
We'll, we'll get the info.
How about those on the phone? People that are, you said you have neighbors or?
We know. We have the receipts right here. We know the exact date.
They have any?
November 16th.
That's over two weeks.
Two weeks.
Mr. Porco, please have a seat.
More than 10 days.
So and it for, you know, just original, original meetings, that notification did not go out. It got approved without us knowing that that notification did not properly go out. So the approval, so the approval of the applicant, finding out that it happened, said, take back my approval, rescind it, and let's start over with the public hearing. So that's where we are today.
But you see, that's where I spoke with the town planner, Richard Schultz, and you told me that I would be questioned either, do I want to continue it? Or do I want to, do I want, do I want to present tonight? And it would be a choice.
It's, it's, you, you can ask for that. Right. But we don't have to grant it. Cause you've been notified, you've been notified.
So your, your request right now, obviously, you're requesting that we don't close the hearing tonight and that we continue the public hearing.
Absolutely. Because I don't know all that you know. You know, even though I recorded it in the past, I don't know all the work that went into the background of it.
But that's why you had two weeks to figure it out.
Notifications went out on when?
16th of November.
But I didn't get one.
All right. We will discuss that as a, as a commission.
That's my problem.
And thank you. And let me go on and see if anyone else wants to speak. All right.
Okay.
Thank you. You can have a seat up there.
Hi. My husband and I live at 885 Main Street. So we're direct neighbors with.
What's your name, please?
My name is Allison Haverne. And my husband is just over there. His name is Barry Haverne. And we live at 885. We received notice for this meeting two weeks ago. We never received anything from Mr. Porco prior. In fact, when I called the town to inquire about the work that was being done, I instead was connected to Mr. Porco. Things have been very, very complicated here. My question is, with or without this meeting occurring and this plant, this permit maybe having been rescinded, the work is still being done. The work continued all through the month of November, every single day. So my, that's my concern. And it's an ongoing concern. It's significant work. If you've driven by, you've seen probably what it looks like here now. So that's for my family, what we're worried about. I understand there's a due process for everything and we certainly want to go the process in the appropriate way. But the work has started and continues to be done. So that is, I think, our biggest concern, unless you have anything to add from across the, no. I think that's our, our concern. We'll certainly participate in a further meeting in January. If that's what we're given, that would be great.
Thank you. Are any of the members of the public online or in person that would like to comment on this application? If not, then we'll back to the commissioners. And we can, what's your feelings about keeping this open? Unusual request by members of the public.
Well, I don't have an issue with keeping it open. I mean, we messed up, well, because we messed up on the first, first time.
And, and it's the same notification that goes out? If it was a brand new application?
These people never knew that this project was going on.
She just said she got it two weeks ago.
Got it two weeks ago, but I'm talking about before then. They already started excavating the property. These people.
But that's because he thought.
Who becomes to this meeting. I understand that. But that, the approval was done without the right notification. Okay. And I can understand the neighbors having a problem with it.
Sure.
And when I thought, when we rescinded it, we told, I said to you that all work was going to cease over there.
That was conveyed to the applicant.
And according to this applicant, the, according to this resident, the work continued to go on. So.
Can I, can I respond?
Yeah.
You do, yeah. You, yeah. You actually get to come back up.
Thank you.
Just to the mic, just for recording purposes. Thank you.
You too. You're going to be a good chairman one day. For 200 years.
This is the certified letter for Rebecca Wood. On the trucking letter that the post office told my wife, she said that she moved and she left no forwarding address. A particular address that was pulled from the tax records and the assessments records is listed on the machine. So I don't know how she gets her mail.
Okay. Do not, don't address the.
As far as the work being done on the property.
Yes.
I had no access to that property at all. I told Rick Schultz, I will stop any kind of trucking going in and out of the property. I spoke to the husband of Barry. He was working nights. I told him I would stop this week and not do any work on, on the project because he was working nights and he's got to sleep during the day. My attorney told me that I have every right to access the property. And if I want to work the property, I could do that as long as I don't infringe on the grading and filling of the property. Want to clean it up, you want to do stumps, you could do that. It's your right as a property owner. So I wasn't going beyond my limits. I was just trying to access the property. At the time, I could never get in. I could never access it. There was a five foot, there was a five foot mound in front of the property. We had to cut a driveway in. And the state of Connecticut, when they granted the access, they said you need to have a sight line down the street so nobody can get hurt and there's no issues with trucking and accidents and so forth. So that's what we did. Just maintain the accessibility and the health and safety of the property of anybody going in and out. I apologize for anybody that is not knowing. These poor people bought the property without knowing that that particular site was an industrial site. Rebecca sold it to me 25, 22 years ago. She knew. She needed to convey that to them. It's not my problem.
Right. You don't have to trust that.
The question I have to ask you is about the notifications. How did they get messed up in the first place?
Please address the commission.
My survey of John Mack with Stu Summers Engineering.
It's John Mack. We gave the list of abutters with the applications. And we were waiting for the, we never got the notice to send out. So.
What do you mean? You never had them?
From the office. It's only from your office.
Okay. So you never notified anybody?
On the regulation, it doesn't specifically say. It says, send the list, fill out the application, give me a list of abutted neighbors, and it doesn't go any further than that. So I really can't fault Summers because the regulation itself has a little glitch to it.
There's no regulation to?
I read it to you. It's very clear.
That the applicant has the responsibility to notify the abutters. Okay.
All right. Well, regardless. Regardless.
So it was misunderstood.
That was corrected by.
By the second.
By the second.
Right.
So, yeah, the regulation does say to hand your office the list and his responsibility is to mail it. But then that was taken back. So now we're at this point, for the sake of everybody, it should be done that everybody agrees.
I mean, everybody was notified.
No, you're absolutely correct. This commission has to make a finding that the notices are in compliance. I do want to throw out some dates. We meet again December 15th. Or if the neighbors prefer additional time, the next meeting is January 5th.
I'm only.
Well, are we done? Are, are they done? So then we can start. So, yeah, I mean, if we're going to start discussing whether we close this or continue it.
That's what we're talking about.
We need to, I think, understanding that there was an issue originally, but.
That doesn't matter anymore.
That has now been rectified by the proper notice going out. I'm afraid we set a dangerous precedence if we allow participants from the public to just request extensions for an applicant because there's a deadline for decisions without any specific reasoning or cause. Like, hey, there's this issue. It needs to be looked into. We haven't really gotten any evidence. The only reasonable thing was there's work on the property being done. That's now been discussed, that it's potentially only these and clearing for, you know, no actual excavation and fill happening. You know, we need to, yeah. What?
There's going to be excavating.
There's going to be, but it hasn't been happening.
The work that he's doing, it's cleaning.
Uh, sorry. The other, you know, and then if we do close it, it goes into deliberations. And I do want to say at that point, the people that should be seated should be the people that have either attended the past meetings regarding this or had time to review the tapes. That's usually you.
No.
Usually a member.
It's a new application.
You don't have to be there, but you have to.
It's a new application. Okay? This is not, and this is not a full application. It's a new application. This is a map. This is not a full application. So now I require a full application. Now you're going to put that up like that I shouldn't be.
Well, not that, not that you're there. It's usually you have to say that you, you know, had reviewed the other material.
I don't like competing for that.
Dominic, what is your feelings as far as closing or continuing? Do you have?
I think at this point, we have to have clear heads and just, our wits down. We have to stay by regulations. We cannot, like you, reiterating what you said. It's a fine line, but we have to stay with the regulations.
Okay, go ahead. I don't understand the fine line. It's pretty simple. Everybody was notified. They've had two weeks to look it over.
And I agree with Ryan.
Closing or continuing?
I'd say I'm, I'm of the opinion to close.
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 I think you've had your last word, right?
I think everyone's had their last.
You want to close? All right. And we will close the hearing.
Thank you.
All right. So do you want to deliberate?
Yeah.
All right. So why don't we take five minutes?
Good idea.
Till we get Leon back.
Get back in 20 minutes.
It's 9:03, no, wait, isn't it?
9:32.
It's 9:32. We are town and rural planning zoning commission, regular meeting. Back in session. All right. So that hearing has been closed. We're now going to deliberate on that.
That's the only thing, correct?
Yes. The military remain open and the, the five commissioners who are seated are now deliberate. All right. So for me, we already approved it. There's no changes. So we choose to reapprove it.
Yeah. It's all back to, and I think we just go to vote and she or the chips fall.
Okay. Unless Leon has questions.
I don't have an application. So I can't, I can't deliberate on this.
All right. So we'll call, the chairman will entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve and have a motion, need a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. We will call the roll.
The motion, does he have to name all the shit, stuff?
Sorry.
No? Okay. Just saying.
What we said?
I said for the motion.
Oh, yeah. No, yeah, recite it.
Okay.
You know what we're talking about. This is excavation and fill permit 909 Main Street. All right. Well, call the roll, starting on my left.
Westland, yes. Maine, yes.
Riley, yes.
Ambrosi, no.
Tomlin, yes. A motion passes. The approval has been approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have no new applications. Other business pending minute meetings. I think we're up to date with that. Do you want to go after? Last meeting minutes, huh? Do we have any correspondence?
None.
I don't have any report, any land commissioners reports. None?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a report?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, staff needs to conduct another zoning regulations subcommittee. You have a photograph in front of you of a temporary structure. Cheryl and I are preparing draft regulations on temporary structures. They really haven't been a problem in the community because they've been in the rear of the properties. This is.
Is that on the street?
It's, it's, it's either in the right of way or right on the light.
It looks like it's on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
It pretty much is.
Out of the barriers.
If there was a sidewalk.
For their own fill. So.
And.
So we have nothing.
And if you look at the roof material, see how far it's come. It's not a, I mean, it's a.
That's evolved. That's evolution.
It's evolution. Building, the building official needs to issue a permit for it. But we need to get a handle on these temporary structures. How many months you want to keep them up? Clearly, we have to regulate setbacks. No question.
There's no regulations at this point.
Right now, we have not regulated them. This has brought it to the forefront. The property owner's calling it temporary. We asked him, how long do you want to keep it up for? He, he didn't have an answer. He's storing a registered motor vehicle in it.
The car is registered though, at least.
So we.
Ask the, is it too many vehicles that he's, he's required to have it? Is it, is it that he's required to have the vehicle covered in his property for our regulation?
No, that's irrelevant.
It's not? Okay.
It's.
Or that he wants to keep it.
I didn't know, like some RVs and stuff.
The time has come for the zoning, planning and zoning commission to recognize that these temporary structures need to be regulated.
This is crazy.
Oh, there's a ton of them down there that have always, not there, but across.
Yeah, most of them in the backyard. It hasn't been issued. Also too, we want to proceed with the discussion on the overlay zone for the Pepper Street Industrial Park. And we have to proceed with the, with the solar, the solar regulations.
Okay.
Also with the doggy daycare.
Do you want to do something in December?
No, December is going to be difficult. I'm recommending January 16th or the 23rd or the 30th.
16th is Monday, the King Day.
Yeah.
That, I, I stand corrected. We are closed on that day. So the 23rd or the 30th.
23rd it is.
Yeah.
Are we on the 23rd?
We can wait that long?
Yeah. It'd give us more time to prepare the regulation.
And we got a hard enough snowstorm. This is probably going to collapse.
The plow will definitely take it out.
Plow's going to take that right out real quick.
I'm clearly hearing from the commission that this has to be dealt with.
5:30?
On the road. 5:30.
23rd. 5:30 to be on next regulation subcommittee. Is that okay with you?
Kelly Barnaby.
And how's everyone with our next meeting on the 15th? We need to continue with the.
That's a good one. I'm good for it.
I'll be here. Yeah, I'll be here.
January 23rd.
Yeah, well, we have two big applications.
January 23rd, 5:30. Let's do it.
So we have a meeting on the 15th, correct?
For the continuation of the two items tonight.
That's it. That's it.
That's a bad service.
Keep them light. I mean, those are pretty substantial properties.
You're right. Okay, Rick, is there anything else?
Well, that is it, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn? Motion?
Again.
So the second. All in favor of the German?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.